Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting, September 11th, 2018. First, we want to thank the Garden Club for providing the floral arrangements that they do for us each council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. May I please ask this evening if we could have our new Community Services Director, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under announcements, we have three announcements this evening. First one is there is a proclamation honoring National Preparedness Month. This is an annual proclamation that we issue here as a council, and this is to promote various items that the Chief of our Fire Department, Dave Cressa, will be going ahead and giving us more information. But in essence, so I won't read all the whereas's so we can get to our presentation from Parkside, is that now therefore let it be resolved that the San Bruno City Council hereby adopts a resolution proclaiming September as National Preparedness Month. And if I could ask Marty Medina, who's a liaison for the community preparedness, to issue this to our fire chief.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Chief Members of the Council. Before I start talking about Preparedness Month, I want to introduce gentleman to my left, Gage Lice. He has, on effective August 24th, started a new role in prevention, and he has assumed the role of Emergency Manager for the city. So, we're very excited about Gage starting, and I know he's looking forward to working with city staff to prepare for future disasters. So, National Preparedness Month serves as a reminder that we all must take action to prepare now and through the year for the types of emergencies that could affect us where we live and where we work. This year's theme is disasters happen, prepare now, and learn how. One of the recommendations for this year is to take time to learn lifesaving skills like CERT and CPR. The Fire Department provides quarterly CPR training and classes, we have two classes left scheduled for this year, Saturday, September 29th and Sunday, November 4th. Interested residents can sign up through the San Bruno Rec Department's web signup portal for those classes, and more information is also on our website. We just started our Fall CERT class last night with additional classes scheduled for the 17th, 24th, October 1st, 8th, 15th, and 20th. There is still room, so if people are interested, they can contact the Fire Department to finish that series of training. Emergency notifications from police, fire, and emergency medical services are another very important part of any preparedness plan. Police and Fire Department staff, as well as Community Preparedness Committee, continue to stress the importance of SMC Alert at various events like National Night Out, our recent health fair at Tamforan, and concerts in the park. And just as a reminder, we discussed it last meeting, but the annual San Mateo County Disaster Day is Saturday, September 22nd, at the San Mateo County Event Center from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. That's all I have. We have additional information on preparedness on our website, please visit, and that's all I have. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Congratulations on your new position. Next on the agenda, which a lot of you are here for and are looking forward to it, is receive the presentation from the 2018 San Bruno Sister City Exchange delegation on their visit to Narita, Japan in July of 2018. Mr. Wallace, Tim.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Tim Wallace. I am the Community Services Superintendent for the Library. This past July, I had the honor of leading the San Bruno Sister City delegation to Narita, Japan. The delegation consisted of myself, two teachers from Parkside Middle School, Laura LeBaum and James Stewart, as well as 10 recent Parkside graduates. On behalf of the entire delegation, I'd like to thank the following organizations for making the Sister City Exchange Program possible. The San Bruno City Council, the City of San Bruno, the San Bruno Park School District, the San Bruno Sister City Committee, the City of Narita, the Narita International Friendship Society, Parkside Host Families, and Narita Host Families. The effort that goes into organizing and maintaining an exchange program like this is truly impressive. However, considering the unique friendships, goodwill, and cultural understanding that came out of our week in Narita, it was well worth the effort. The Sister City Exchange Program provided us a much more enriching experience than a typical tourist would receive. Up on the wall is a slideshow of some of the events in which we participated, which included touring a Narita fire station, spending a day at a local middle school, visiting Narita's 1,300-year-old temple, and pulling a Japanese parade float called a dashi through the streets of Narita. And to make our trip just a little bit more memorable, we experienced a 6.0 earthquake right in the middle of dinner with Narita officials. Beyond these experiences, our San Bruno students immersed themselves in Japanese culture and family life by spending the week at homes of Japanese host families, which they will tell you a little bit more about in just a moment. Before that, however, I want to let you know how proud I am of these 10 students. They gave speeches in Japanese in front of large audiences on multiple occasions, performed dances on multiple occasions, and were fully engaged in all activities of the trip. They were kind and respectful, not only to our hosts, but to each other as well. They were excellent representatives of San Bruno. Each student will now tell you a little bit about their experience in Narita. So, guys, come on up to the podium. Each of you, please.
Hi, my name is Masaya Miyaki, and this summer, I got to visit Narita, Japan with my classmates from Parkside Elementary School for the San Bruno Narita Program. Although I have visited Japan a couple of times in the past, I had an amazing time there, and I made many new friends and fun memories I will never forget. I also learned many new things about Japan and their culture. In this trip, we visited temples, schools, and other fascinating places in Narita that were quite different from America. We also got to pull the dashi at the Gion Festival. All these things taught me Japanese culture, including lifestyles, beliefs, manners, and many more. Out of all these fun things, I think my favorite activity we did was probably when we went to the Gion Festival the second time with everyone, including the students from Japan and their families. There, I did a lot of things, like spending time with everyone, talking about their lives at Japan, and joking around. I also enjoyed the typical Japanese festival things, like the dashi, food stalls, games, and people dancing and singing. That night was a fun cheerful night filled with laughter and joy. Overall, this trip was an unforgettable time that I will never forget, and I am very glad I joined the San Bruno Narita Program. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Mark Diaz. My trip to Japan was a life-changing experience. It exposed me to new culture and gave me a new perspective of the world. I also made some lifelong friends that I still communicate with and will never forget. It also gave me the opportunity to go sightseeing and see the beauty of what lies in Japan. I don't think I will forget what I experienced in Japan.
Hi, my name, good evening, my name is Frances Chua, and the Narita Program had had a big impact on me. It taught me that our society in America is much more different than the society in Japan. I've gained so much from this, from new friends to new experiences. The Narita Program has also taught me bravery and that I am capable of adapting to a place and environment that I am completely not aware or used to. My favorite part of this trip was going to the school because it made me push my Japanese skills to its full extent, and it helped me make friends along the way. But my favorite thing about this program is the hard work our teachers and students put into it, because that took a lot of teamwork, and teamwork is our key to everything. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sienna Miller, and I am 14 years old. I was happy to be part of the Narita Parkside-San Bruno Exchange. I'm just gonna talk about a little bit of key points that I really, really, really liked and enjoyed from the whole project. So, one of my favorite activities just so happened to be a coming into the whole airport, where everyone, everyone, everyone had came into the airport and decided to scream and shout our names, and it was my favorite part. I can never forget what they taught me, and the families made me so comfortable, and they made me, were able to make me sleep at night, and I was able to enjoy my stay there. It taught me a lot about friendship, and it taught me a lot about learning and respecting other people. Their culture was very interesting, and I would never forget what I learned there. They did a lot of things, and their temples were absolutely beautiful. The amount of work they put into them is amazing, and they were also one of my favorite parts. I also want to thank my teachers and everyone on the board for the City Council for letting me enjoy this wonderful journey of mine and experience friendship. I hope that if you ever do this again for future reference, I want everyone to enjoy what I've enjoyed at the Narita. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marbella Mateo. Being an exchange student is a rare experience. It is an opportunity that very few people undertake. It was such an honor to be, to represent Parkside, San Bruno, and the United States and the Japanese community. Prior to participating in the program, I was afraid, nervous, yet I was thrilled to participate. It was unsettling to think that I would be such a foreign place without knowing the language. However, when we arrived in Japan, all of my previous speculations had vanished. All the locals were overwhelmingly friendly, and they were so welcoming. I enjoyed being able to take walks in nature and navigate such picturesque locations in Japan. I've been to places where I know that I wouldn't be able to be, to be in during, because I, I was only given that privilege because I was part of this trip, and I would like to thank the entire board for that. During the program, I saw firsthand the differences between Narita and San Bruno, and it's safe to say that they are worlds apart. However, this trip made me realize that powerful and meaningful friendships are able to form despite the undeniable differences between peoples and societies. I thoroughly enjoyed this trip, as it gave me so much to experience in so little time. It helped me grow as a person, a student, and as a friend. I'd made plenty of realizations throughout the world. I am more than grateful to have been chosen to be part of this absolutely splendid trip, to afford multiple bonds with multiple people, and to become part of the strengthening bond between San Bruno and Narita. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marla Martindale, and being part of the Narita Program has changed my life in many ways. The biggest way it's changed my life is given me lifelong friendships with my host families, who were the most sweet and kind people I've ever met, and they treated me like family, and that was my favorite part. The culture over there is amazing, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to go, because I wanted to see the culture. It has such a big impact on me. I mean, the people that I met, not just my host family, and it made me get closer with all these people, so that was one of my favorite parts. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alex Masalov, and I had the privilege of going to Narita, Japan with these amazing people. I enjoyed the most being with the host families and getting to know them on a personal level and really just spending time with them, connecting through all the activities we did. We went to Disneyland, we went to many different temples, and that was just beautiful, just connecting with people through sights and seeing, seeing what they see through our eyes in a different country was just amazing. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Zachary Batista. I thought that the Japanese kids visiting America would have been the best part of this year, although this summer I was happy to be proven wrong. Going to Japan was a whole different world from being in America. Exploring the city and all they had to offer was so fun. From the school to the Shinshoji Temple, I love seeing all of the amazing sights in Japan. At first, it was kind of weird living with a family that wasn't yours, but everyone in Japan treated us like we were part of their family, and it made us always feel welcome. I must admit, my favorite part of the trip was still all-boys at Tokyo Disneyland. That was just really amazing. This trip was one of the best times of my life, and I sure won't forget the memories I've made here. By the time the week was up and we had to head home, I didn't want to leave anybody, hosts, families, friends, and even just random people in Japan. That was great. I hope that many other students will get to make the trip on this program. Thank you very much.
When I first came to this program, I really didn't know what to expect, because, well, I'm gonna be going to a country that I've never been to. When I, when I was first, when we first landed, I was really nervous and was surprised at everything there, because everything obviously was different. And when we first, and then when we started to go to all these places, I kind of started to get a bond with all of these people, and then we, after all that, we start to make more bonds along the way, whether it's with our friends, and whether it's with our, with people over there. And I must admit, going there was probably the life-changing experience that I wish I can do again, because not only did I make friends, people, with people during the whole week, but the entire time was just love and caring and just a bunch of positive energy just flowing through everything. And I really wish that I can do this again, I wish I can just go back to time and just do this again. And, yeah. I have to admit, my favorite part of the entire trip would be the last night that we all had together during the Gion Festival, where we all just like really hung out, eat together, and just play together, and it was such a beautiful experience. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Logan Easley. Probably don't recognize me up there. I had a lot longer hair back then. But the recent trip to Japan had, has impacted my life in many ways. When I was younger, I was told about Narita, Japan by my uncle, who was the fire chief at the time, and he had gone once years ago. Ever since then, I hoped that I would be given the opportunity to visit Narita, and that dream came true. Like I said, this trip was a dream come true, and it has impacted my life in such a meaningful way. I experienced friendship beyond a distance of thousands of miles when I knew, when I only, when I only knew the friends for a couple of days. I will continue to remain in contact with my friends for years to come, and I will cherish the friendships made. But the trip, it had a multiple, a multitude of incredible parts. You know, we went to Disneyland, this car university where we get to drive really fast in cars, the Gion Festival, which was incredible. But I would say, you know, as hard as it is to pick, there's definitely one thing that stands out, and it's the friendships that I made, the friendships that I strengthened with the people here, as well as the people I made friends with in Japan. You know, it's, although we only spoke face-to-face with these kids for a couple of days, I feel like I knew these kids like my entire life, you know? It's, it's amazing, and I will, and like we said, you know, we went to Disneyland, so to quote one of the famous Disney rides, it truly is a small world after all.
Hi, I'm Laura LeBaum. I'm one of the teachers that went on to the program this year. Over the last two years, I had the privilege of being a member of the Narita delegation. In that time, I have been lucky enough to see firsthand how amazing this program is and how it changes the lives of adults and kids who participated. I have met so many fabulous people and participated in activities that have helped me grow as a person and an educator. I hope that this program continues to thrive for many years to come, so other people have this experience. Thank you very much for everything.
Good evening, my name is James Stewart. I'm the other teacher from Parkside. This was my first year as a San Bruno teacher. In the beginning of the year, there we were divvying up responsibilities, and they're, so who would like to do the Narita thing? And I was like, I guess. I like Japan, sounds good. It was a tremendous amount of work, but it was so worth it. Watching these 10 kids go from not knowing Japanese to speaking Japanese was, was great. Watching them represent their city was tremendous. The trip, there's a whole bunch of great things to say about the trip, but what I will take from it most is this is my first group that I shepherded to Japan, and I will never forget them. I'd like to end by quoting Mark Twain, who said that "Travel is fatal to prejudice, bigotry, and narrow-mindedness," and no more than this trip has cemented that in my heart. Bringing those two worlds together was life-changing for me. Thank you.
So, first, on behalf of the City Council, we want to thank you for coming down this evening and sharing your experience. It's not easy, not only, as some of you said, the nervousness to go abroad and try something different in a different culture, far away, but also having to come here and speak to us. You did excellent, and you should be proud of yourselves. You should be proud, Parkside should be proud of you. And if any of you have homework tonight, you're all excused from it. You can tell them the mayor said. But in all honesty, I think this is something you will treasure. There are young people that I have seen speak here that I've, who are in their 30s, and they still remember that trip, that time, and the embracement, and just the culture. And it's just something you'll never forget, and you'll have for the rest of your life. And at this young age, think of what else is before you. So, on behalf of the council, we all here want to just tell you how proud we are of you. We want to thank you for representing San Bruno and your school as well as you did, and we again thank you for your time this evening. Congratulations to each and every one of you. Thank you. And then also, I know we don't expect you to stay, but I also want to, you know, for the parents too, you also put a lot of work and effort, time, love, and allowing them to go abroad. So, and to the faculty, I, maybe hopefully it's not your last time that you will be going with another team and shepherd, but to the faculty as well, it is a lot of work. But as Bob Marshall, former mayor, who helped establish kind of this, and all the mayors since have always found this a reward, and a blessing, and really something that brings folks together when there are so many things that may divide, this is something that will be long-lasting. So, thank you to all of you. Have a good evening. We'll just pause for a moment, so we allow. Under announcements, I do want to take a moment and ask our city manager, Javon, if you would be as kind to introduce one of the new members to the executive team?
Sure, absolutely. Mayor and council and members of the public, I'm pleased to introduce tonight our new Community Services Director that will oversee our Recreation Library and Senior Programs. Her name is Joanne McGreeney. She comes to us by way of UCSF, where she was their Assistant Director of Sports and Recreation Programs, and we are really excited to have someone with her professional skillset and management expertise join our team. But as a, as a side benefit, Joanne is a, a, she grew up in San Bruno. So, when I was giving her a tour, I don't know why I felt like I needed to give her a tour of the rec building. At some point, she stopped me and said, "Javon, I went to preschool in this room." And so, Joanne, we are thankful that you joined us.
Welcome very much. Or shall I say, welcome back home to where it began? Now, under public comment, we have no cards. Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak on any item that was not on the agenda? Okay. Okay, so is this on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, well, why don't you go up to the podium, and then we'll work through this and then figure it out and make sure you're taken care of? Sure.
Thank you. So, my name is Beverly. Whoa. I spoke to Tareko Medina, our mayor, regarding our homeless situation that we're currently having. I live on Easton, and since speaking with him, we have actually had a lot of our homeless people evacuate the area but leaving a lot of trash. So, the problem that I'm seeing is that, I live on Easton at Angus, so if you guys don't know, there's a parking structure there, or a parking lot. So, a lot of people just stationed out there by the walls, and you could hear them at 3:00 in the morning, 5:00 weekday, weekend, and it's becoming a problem, because I'm calling the cops nonstop. They leave their stuff, they get evicted, and then shortly after, they're back. So, I do see a lot of syringes within the area, human feces. I'm walking around, and I've gone as far as speaking to the church in San Bruno, the San Bruno Church, to see if I could get the father to, to help us out and kind of screen the individuals that are being assisted a little bit better, because I find that there are a lot of questionable characters that are coming in, and we've got several different schools' children living here. I grew up here, went to Allen School, Parkside, Cappuccino, Skyline, and I'm a native, and it's definitely changed a lot since I was a child. So, I come here today to see what else we can do, so that that way we can create a healthier, safer community for all of us to live here and be happy.
Thank you, Beverly. Perfect. Appreciate it. And it was nice, nice, put a face with the conversation on the phone. Thank you for your time on the phone as well that time. And staff, have you taken note of that?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on items that are not on the agenda? If not, let's move on under, to consent, please.
On the consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
And before I ask if there are any items, I've asked our city manager if he could give some highlights on some of the projects that have been completed. We have quite a few projects under the consent that are here for completion.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. There are three projects on tonight's consent calendar that I would like to take a moment to highlight and congratulate staff for their progress on completing these projects. The first one is your item 5E, and that is a resolution accepting the Mills Park Neighborhood Streetlight Conversion Project. I really want to highlight that this project came in under $211,000 under budget. There was an initial budget and estimate of $929,000. Staff completed the project for $718,000, and so as a result, $211,000 would be returned to the general fund. And I want to point out that I had nothing to do with this. It's really the work of our public work staff led by Jimmy Tan, and in my experience in government, it is actually rare when you have projects coming in under budget, and that is actually the case. And that is actually the case with all three of the items on your consent calendar tonight. So the other item is item 5F, which is a bus route pedestrian improvement project that came in $47,000 under budget. And so that money will be returned to the Proposition B money that we use for those activities and benefit other projects in the city. And the last project that we're asking council to accept tonight is 5K, which is a sidewalk repair contract. The initial budget for that contract was 400, or for that entire work, was $421,000, and we completed that project for $17,000 under budget. So again, I just want to thank the public, thank the Public Works Department and their staff for their hard work in keeping costs down and managing the contingencies.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Jimmy, to you and your staff. Any action from council on consent?
Mayor?
Yes, please, morning.
So I had a couple of questions. So should I formally pull the item or are we going to free?
If you want to vote on it separately, sure. If you want to just make comments, then you could just do the comments, whatever you wish.
Okay, okay. The comments are questions on that. And that is a congratulations. There, besides those three, there was the Bel Air project that was done in-house by our staff to make some really necessary improvements there at the Bel Air for the baseball field, for the parking there, and improve the sidewalk safety for our residents. So I wanted to commend staff on that. The questions I have about the Mills Park project, we have a number of regulated RO circuits for our city, which causes a big problem when they go out because not just one street light goes out, the whole block goes out. So there is no, there's no identified project to deal with those. I went through the capital improvement program and didn't identify that. So I think it'd be prudent for us to look at those six or seven, I can't keep track of how many there are, but start thinking about what it's going to take to prepare ourselves to handle that. Because the project that we completed was taken care of like on the run. And staff did a really good job about that. So how, how could we be a little bit more prepared to handle these old circuits that are, that are out there? The last one is a comment on item L. Item L is for identifying a council member, and I have no objection with Councilwoman O'Connell going to Louisiana for the pipeline conference. I'm just interested in knowing how other council members get in line for that. This is my third year sitting and I would like to go to represent our city and to learn more about pipeline safety. I was an inspector when the explosion occurred and it would be nice to see how that works out and maybe have a rotating way of having council members do these different trips. So those are my comments.
Thank you for the comments. City manager?
Sure. In regard to the last one, I think that's a perfect segue into the conversation we're going to have at the special meeting that follows this meeting where we talk about city council policies and procedures. And I do think that one of the things that we can talk about establishing is a formal process on how the city council expends its budget funds, both for travel and for other items, and potentially a rotating practice. Your other comment about the streetlight process, that has been duly noted, and we will talk about those conversations at the appropriate time, likely when we talk about our capital budget.
Anybody have any other questions you want to pull? Any action on consent? Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion made and second to approve consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. We'll move on to conduct of business.
Item 6A, adopt resolution approving the parcel map and final map and authorizing the city manager to execute improvement agreements, maintenance agreements, storm water treatment measure maintenance agreements, agreements for dedication of real property for park and recreational uses, and affordable housing agreement for the Skyline residential projects at 3300 College Drive.
Ms. Sullivan?
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Mark Sullivan. I'm Long Range Planning Manager. And the purpose of this item is to consider approval of a resolution approving the parcel map, final maps, and map and various agreements to allow the Skyline residential project to move forward. On, on February 27th, 2018, the city council approved various entitlements to allow construction of the proposed Skyline residential project. The site is a long vacant eight-acre parcel owned by the Samatero County Community College District. It's located at 3300 College Drive. It's on the east side of the Skyline College campus and it's directly across from the Marisol Development. The project consists of a total of 70 residential dwelling units on two parcels. Summerhill Homes proposes to develop 40 single-family homes for individual sale and the college district proposes to construct 30 multifamily units in two buildings to be used as faculty and staff housing. The project will create a new residential neighborhood with internal private streets, two neighborhood parks, landscaped common areas, and off-site fitness park and other improvements. And I will just now show you a few. So this is a summary of the, that I just discussed. One thing I want to mention is that the, the project includes 11 affordable units, which is equal to 15% of the total of 70 units on the project. And all those units will be provided in the faculty and staff housing owned by the college Let me just show you just briefly the, the single-family project, which we'll call Skyline Ridge. And these are the examples of the four housing types, the four plan types. This is a 3D image of what the interior might, might look like or will look like. This is what the college ridge, which that's the name for the college apartments, will look like. This is a front facade. And this is a view from the, the interior street from the, where the single-family homes are located. So the, the project approval was subject to various conditions of approval, including preparation of a parcel map, a final map, and construction of private improvements. The private improvements provide new curb, gutter, sidewalk, driveway, streets, street lighting, signing and striping, landscaping, trees, street trees, irrigation, storm drainage systems, and treatment measures, sanitary sewer system, joint trench systems, and play structure improvements. The public, so those are all the private improvements, which is most of the improvements. The public improvements include a new domestic stormwater system which will run along College Drive and College Road. The conditions of approval further required each developer to enter into various agreements with the city. And right now, I'll briefly go through each of the requested approvals. And there are 10 in total that are attached to your, to your staff report. First is a parcel map. And what the parcel map will do is will subdivide the eight-acre parcel into a six-acre parcel to be purchased from the Community College District and developed by Summerhill Homes for the 40 single-family units. And in addition, a two-acre parcel that will be owned and developed by the college district. Separately after that, the final map will further subdivide the parcel owned by Summerhill, the six-acre parcel, to create 40 single-family lots, roadway parcels, common areas, and various easements. The parcel map and final map were reviewed by the city engineer and determined to be in compliance with the project conditions and technically correct. There are also two improvement agreements. These ensure that the public and private improvements will be constructed and approved by the city. The developers are required to complete all construction, provide bonds to guarantee completion of all work, and repair of any damage or defects for one year following the construction. The agreement holds, the agreements hold the city harmless from any claims, and the developer pays the city costs for the review, approval, and inspection of the public and private improvements. There are also two maintenance agreements, one for the single-family and one for the multifamily project. They define the developer's responsibilities for long-term maintenance of all the private improvements to ensure that they will be maintained up to city standards. These include standards for private stormwater and wastewater facilities, landscaping, and irrigation. There are also two stormwater agreements, which define each developer's responsibilities for maintenance of stormwater treatment and control measures, including annual inspections and reports that are mandated by the state. Next, we have the Parkland Agreement. And the Parkland Agreement applies only to the multifamily parcel owned by the college district. And this provides for the dedication of property along the south side of the running track at the Skyline College Campus and ensures construction, long-term maintenance, and public access to the off-site fitness park to be constructed per project conditions of approval. And you can see the, the location on the south side of the, it's actually in the top end of the slide where the fitness track would be. And this, these are just examples of the fitness equipment. This will be publicly accessible, accessible to the public. And then finally, we have the affordable housing agreement. And this restricts, the conditions, per the conditions of approval, the agreement restricts 11 units within the faculty and staff housing as affordable, with six units affordable to low-income households and five units affordable to moderate-income households for a period of 55 years. This satisfies the affordable housing obligation for the entire 70-unit residential project and no unit, or no affordable units are required to be built within the single-family project. That'll be entirely within the multifamily project. In addition, the district will pay an affordable housing impact fee of $320,000. The agreement also provides two approaches to project phasing. And the first assumes that, that both projects proceed on parallel tracks, that they go forward concurrently. And the second is if, for some unforeseen reason, there's a delay in construction of the multifamily project. So in the first case, the city will issue no more than 20 building permits for the single-family project until permits have been issued for at least six affordable units within the multifamily project. And the city will not approve final inspections or certificates of occupancy for more than 20 single-family units until all 11 affordable units have been completed and approved for occupancy. Staff expects this to be the likely scenario since we've received the building application for both projects and they're currently under, under review. However, in the event that there is a delay in the multifamily project, we just wanted to be able to cover that, just in case that happens. Staff and the city attorney have worked with the developers to ensure that the single-family project can proceed. The agreement includes a provision that, that provides the city with the greatest assurance that the affordable housing are built and provides the single-family developer with the assurance needed to obtain project financing, which is, is critical. If the multifamily project is delayed, the single-family developer may elect to pay a security deposit equal to the full impact fee for all 11 affordable units. And that fee is equal to approximately $3.5 million. And it is, is subject to the following time limit. So if the, the city collects the $3.5 million fees, building permits for both parcels must be issued by May of 2019 and construction must be completed within three years thereafter. And that three-year period is standard for, for building permits for larger projects. The entire deposit would be reimbursed upon completion of all 11 affordable units. If for some reason, the multifamily project is not built at all within the time limits, the city would retain $2.8 million. And that represents the fee out for the single-family project. So that if the single-family project came forward alone, that would be the amount of, that would be the fee for that project. And, and the remaining money would be reimbursed to the college district because the project wasn't built. And the money would be placed into the city's affordable housing fund to be used for an affordable housing project in some other location. So we don't expect the, the second scenario to occur, but it's, it's something that we just felt that the agreement should account for because you never know. So in conclusion, the project will create a new residential neighborhood of high architectural quality and it provides family housing and affordable workforce housing for college faculty and staff. Also, very importantly, the project would help to address the region's housing crisis and help San Bruno to meet its regional housing needs obligation. It would fill in a gap between the campus and the surrounding residential neighborhoods to the east, and it would add an estimated $60 million in assessed value from property that's currently not on the tax rolls. The project would include new landscaping, parks, internal streets, various infrastructure, including storm drains, sanitary sewers, that would be privately owned and maintained with no cost to the city. It would install a new public water main, which the city may need for future connections between a pump station and water tank between the, well, the pump station by Skyline and the water tank behind the college. So staff has reviewed the final map, the parcel map, final map, and all the agreements and deemed them accurate and appropriate for execution. Accordingly, staff recommends that the city council approve the parcel map, final map, and the agreements. That concludes my presentation, and I just want to mention that representatives of the college district and Summerhill are in the audience. And also, Will Anderson is here to answer any questions about improvement agreements and maintenance agreements.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Questions, comments from council?
So I went from being really, really excited when I first heard about this project. I thought it was great how to take a piece of property and fulfill a need for the staff that work there and, or work within the district and also provide that housing, much-needed housing. So I'm concerned about item three, you know, it, and I'd like to hear more of why it seems like it, the, that affordable or the staff housing could not be built and then the city would get $2.8 million to go build it somewhere else. And we're not really good at developing property. That's Skyline's and Summerhill's expertise. So I am hesitant in approving this for that. But I would like to hear the applicant explain why they think it could not be built. I mean, there's acts of God, but if you want to build something, this is kind of what the project was approved as, is building both of them. So that's the first part, and I guess I can wait to hear that and then I can ask some other comments.
City manager?
Sure. If the applicant would like to respond, I'll let the applicant go first. Okay?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, my name is Mitch Bailey. I am the chief of staff for the Community College District and Councilman Medina. We, I think this is a belt and suspenders approach from the city's perspective to make sure that indeed we're fulfilling our, our objective. We have every intention, 110% to make We have every intention, 110%, to make sure that we build those 30 units in as short a time as possible because we have a waitlist of 257 people to get into those units. And actually, we probably won't start, stop with that one. You know, the district's goal is probably to have six total employee housing complexes, two on each of our campuses. So we'll be back to you at some other point in time to do another one, too. So we have, you know, more than full intention of fulfilling that obligation as quickly as possible. So I will refer back to staff on the belt-and-suspenders approach to make sure that they're keeping us honest, but as soon as we can get shovel in the ground, we're going to.
Thank you. City manager?
Absolutely. And so I think that's a great terminology, as belt-and-suspenders approach. I think the other thing that council should know is that while we're approving them, they are together in this action tonight. They're, all right, they are two totally separate projects, and so they will be two totally separate projects. And one of the reasons why we first entered into these discussions is because the financing for the single-family project is being put up by a separate financial entity. And that financial entity asks for assurance that if, for some reason, that the multifamily project did not continue, that their project would not be held up. And so while the College District does totally intend to do that, this belt-and-suspenders approach is really needed to, one, give the financial institution that's putting up the money for the multifamily unit confidence that there is a way for them to close out their project if everything they've done, their financing is in line, their contractors have performed, that we will issue the final format, the final permits and close that out. In addition, it gives the city confidence that should something happen, interest markets go down, the financing for the multifamily project is delayed, that we have assurances that we're holding significant resources that will, one, be an incentive for the College District to, as soon as feasibly possible, complete the multifamily project. But then in addition, should, if that project go away, we have the $2.8 million, which reflects the fee out for the single-family portion that will go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we will do with those funds what typically happens, which is, it, of course, does not construct, construct a unit, which is why we prefer the units to be built on-site, but our policy does allow for the fee out of roughly $320,000 per unit. So that's how we got to that 2.8.
Does that answer that? Marty? Laura, you want to follow?
Hold on, please. Hold on. Marty, did you have some?
Yeah, it's interesting. I'm currently, I work in Fremont, and I see a lot of development going on, and there's a big rush. I'm just concerned that, yeah, okay, so you build the houses first, and then we have $2.8 million that go to, our other $4 million approximately that we have in our fund, and, you know, we still don't have the housing. But I, but I, but I hear the reason, and I guess we can hear more later or now, I'm not sure.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I got an answer. I'm not exactly happy with it, but okay.
Okay, well, please. Thank you.
I twisted my knee this weekend at Tahoe. I just wanted to say on the financing, there's no worry about our financing because that is going to come at close of escrow from Summerhill. The money we get for the property will be spent on the construction of the development.
Okay. And also, I would like to reiterate that both building permit applications are in and are under review. And I know that the College District has the intention of issuing the RFP for the contractor coming when? It's next month or so? So, I mean, it's moving along. It is moving along, and, you know, there's never been any question. This is just a, something that you have to, you know, account for.
So what you're trying to do is, obviously, we can't predict the future.
Right.
And so this is something that staff has put in as a provision, should something happen, because if there's nothing there, then what do we have?
Right. And I'd also like to point out that one thing I didn't mention is that, you know, thinking of sort of every eventuality, there was one thought like, well, what happens if they pay the fee? Then the fee is paid, and they decide they don't want to build the affordable units.
Exactly.
Then what? Well, there's a, there's a provision in here that says if the multifamily project, or when the multifamily project is built, it will provide 11 affordable units according to the conditions of approval. So that, that's baked into the agreement as well.
Thank you. Marty?
Okay. It will be interesting having two contractors working side by side with their own objectives. I mean, I see it all the time as infill housing is currently in Fremont and probably everywhere else of trying to deal with two contractors. So that should be very interesting with the encroachment permits and who's doing what and who's responsible. Now you're going to have two different projects, projects occurring hopefully at the same time, trying to get all their equipment and all their workers in. So I'm get, where are the, all these workers going to park when they're, when they're building these homes? Parking lot?
Are you prepared, Dan? Respond to that? Okay, please.
Mayor, council. Again, so we have, there's a parking lot adjacent to, I don't know, Mark, if you could flip back to the original map, I can actually show you where the parking lot is.
No, go to this one.
So right there, so if you look to the, the right side of the screen, you'll see sort of that middle section on the right side, there is a, there are a couple hundred spots in that area where we will dedicate that for the folks who are on-site working. Yeah, and I also, if I might add too as well, so as you, you know, your comment relating to, you know, having multiple contractors on-site certainly is a coordination exercise, but please be aware that Summerhill will be doing all of the horizontal constructions, so all of the infrastructure components will be, for both parcels, will be handled by Summerhill.
Okay, great. How, well, I'll just reel off a couple of questions, so I don't want you going up and down. And I know I don't want you getting up anymore because you twisted your knee. So how, are there any labor agreements in place with this project? Is it a prevailing wage job? The off-site park improvements, where is that in the schedule? So it's conditional if the housing's completed, but there's a chance now, or there's a, there's an angle that perhaps the apartment housing will not be built, but, but we definitely are going to build, do the park improvements. So I'd like to know when that's scheduled, and I didn't see a date when that had to get completed. So I want, would prefer that happened earlier than, three years from now is when, by May 9th, May of 2021 is when it has to get completed?
That's for pulling building permits, yeah.
For pulling the building?
I mean, for issuing building permits, yeah.
I'm interested in that this project will have San Bruno fiber installed, and is it solely San Bruno fiber? Okay. The, interested in hearing about a construction schedule of how, when, when's it going to start based on getting your permit? How long you're anticipating of the construction is? And in one of the agreements, it lists $50,000 as a deposit on staff time. That's going to get eaten up really, really quick. So I, I think there's, there is a provision for that, but it seems like that $50,000 for the size of the job would be pretty, pretty small. There's just a couple inspectors out there, and I'm guessing full-time to see this work. I did inspect the previous Summerhill job across the street, so I was there full-time, and there's a lot of neighbors that are going to be concerned about the traffic, about the noise, about the dust that gets blown around. So, and the last, the last part of it is, the impact of this additional water and sewer for our system, wouldn't this be more expensive to treat and pump this water than if it was, clearly I'm setting you up for this, if it was a gravity system? So shouldn't this development be paying for that additional cost for those services that these homeowners will be impacting our system with the additional amount of pumping of the water and the sewage that will be required? And, and in the, in the EIR, I believe there was mention of a report that was going to get done to quantify that amount. So I was wondering if that report's been done, and the result of that report would show that it would be obviously more costly to have water pumped up a hill to serve these new residents, and how does the city get whole on that to where we're, we're taking on an additional cost for providing water to this, to this development?
I know there was a lot of questions, and I was writing as fast as I could, but I think, and correct me, fibers, yes. It's not specified that it's only San Bruno cable. Prevailing wage is yes, and was put in the conditions of use at last time we sat here when I asked that question.
I didn't see anything in, in those agreements, so it could have been somewhere, but I didn't see it.
It was conditions.
Okay, thank you.
But at least those two I can answer quickly to help. I know there were some others, construction schedule, impact, date, I think parking was answered, and then the 2.8 million, I believe. But if, if there's somebody who would like to address or?
My name's Elaine Bries, I'm with Summerhill. I'll hit the schedule question. So as indicated, we're, we're in for building permits, but with, with the action this evening, our next, our other pending permit is a grading permit, so our plan would be to actually start site work by the end of September, beginning of October. And that's a significant amount of work which will take us into spring of 2019 and set for model homes and apartments as well. So the first run will be the horizontal work, which will take us through, as I mentioned, the spring of 2019, but we're ready to go as soon as, we're ready to go. And I think I'll defer to Public Works on the question regarding water and sewer, if they want to answer that, because that was the studies that was done by them. We are paying the, the fees for the water and sewer as it relates to the city.
Elaine, could, could you just indicate how long you think the construction of the single-family project will take?
After that, about a year, 15 months for the homes. We, we build model homes first, and these homes have never been built before, so we do the model homes, they get framed, we do frame walks, and then we start the remaining homes, and they are built in sequence as the market.
And councilmember, I think one of the other questions that you had, too, related to the construction of the Parkland area.
Right.
You know, so we have a flex, flexibility in, in, in working with that. Our goal is certainly to have that done well before the completion of our, of our multifamily units are completed. And our goal is, is certainly to make sure that we're sort of, you know, on schedule and, and, you know, working in tandem with Summerhill on their project so that we can complete these things around the same time.
Did staff want to, oh, staff is, staff is. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable members of council. My name's Will Anderson, staff engineer at Bruno Public Works. And in regards to the pumping, I'm assuming that you're speaking of the domestic water system? Yeah, as part of the plan development process, we did perform a hydraulic modeling analysis, and the results of that indicated the existing system can accommodate the additional demand from the project. And as far as the pumping, I guess the, the way the system works, the, the pump station itself actually sends water to the two water tanks on the west side of Skyline, and then from there, it's just kind of gravity-fed out to the entire area. But another reason that pump station was constructed in the first place is for emergency water supplies. So, yeah, so i, i, if the, the pressure gets too low or there's insufficient flow, the pumps in the station kick in to supply that water, no matter where it is within that general quadrant.
That's a great answer. So the pump station is adequately sized. However, the question that I have is, is the additional cost of pumping that additional amount of water up to the tank from wherever the water first enters the pump station. It needs to get up there, okay? So it's an incremental cost, and, and I, and I believe this is, this is what I've been trying to explain to people when they ask, why is our water bills so high? Why is our sewer, sewer bill so high? Because we have the existing infrastructure that has to be replaced. And when you replace that infrastructure, it's very expensive. Those pump stations are four to $5 million each. So everybody, even though you may live in a certain area that doesn't need a pump station, your, your, your water and your sewer operate via gravity. When you have to replace this aging infrastructure and you're spending $5 million a pump station, you, you start doing the math. We have, I believe we have eight or nine water pump stations and, but the whole point, right, but the whole point is, exactly. The whole point is, that's an additional cost that previously we'd have to look back and change our whole costing model. But as people start coming into and start adding this additional cost to our current situation, we should recover that. There is certain costs associated with providing that additional water to new customers, and it should be, the city should make, should be made whole in, in that cost over the time that of, of your models that, that can run on how much water, additional water you're going to need every single day to make sure that that water capacity's there. So if, if that isn't really whole, then it should be made whole. There is a cost associated with that. The electricity, the, the maintenance, additional maintenance required to maintain those pumps, to replace those pumps, they have a certain cost.
And I guess specific to this project, you know, we, they are installing, the single-family, they're doing 40 new services. I believe the apartments are installing two new water services. And the costs associated with that include both water capacity fees and sewer capacity fees. So in a way, they're kind of buying into the system with that.
And, city manager?
In addition, our current process and, and policy is that the study is done. If the facilities can meet the need of the new development, there's not an additional impact fee, if you will. I think going forward, councilmember Medina, one of the things you're talking about is potentially an impact fee that could be assessed, and, and the city is current, currently has an impact fee analysis going on, and we can look at impact fees in the future should the council so desire. But right now, with this particular development, we followed our current protocols, which is to do the study, and our current facilities can accommodate the, the usage. They will pay the connection fees and pay the ongoing fees like any other customer. But I think to address the philosophical point, you're, you're mentioning, I think the venue for that is really an impact fee at the time of construction or at the time of approval.
Any other questions? See, that was a good answer.
Yeah.
Michael, you better. Okay, I think that that's it for questions. I'll bring it back to council for any action. It is a resolution which, if there isn't a, we would need a motion to adopt with a second, and we would do a roll call if so, desire of the council.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Next time, please.
Adopt resolution authorizing the purchase of 14 vehicles in an amount not to exceed Reappropriate available 2016-17 budget from the General Equipment Revolving Fund in the amount of $83,000. Reappropriate available-
Hold on, I'm sorry, city clerk. Mr. Sullivan, could you stay for just a second? Please, go ahead.
Reappropriate available 2017-18 budget from the General Equipment Revolving Fund in the amount of $585,000, and appropriate available funds in the General Equipment Revolving Fund in the amount of- Reappropriate available 2017-18 budget from the General Equipment Revolving Fund in the amount of $585,000. And appropriate available funds in the General Equipment Revolving Fund in the amount of $87,500 for the cost increase in the revised vehicle purchase price from the budget.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to staff, Mark, the reason I asked you to pause, you didn't have to sit down, you get to go home, is I and the council want to acknowledge your 17 years of service to the City of San Bruno. I know Friday is your final day and retirement is upon you. And so on behalf of the council, we want to thank you for your service to this community. And thank you. And you have a 5-0 vote on this project. And we appreciate all you do. We wish you the very best in all that you are going to do. So thank you again. Sorry, Melissa. Staff, who's taking lead? Mr. Bosch, Dennis?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Dennis Bosch, and I am your Public Works Deputy Director, Maintenance and Operations. Tonight, I am presenting for approval, vehicle replacements for the past 2016, 2017, and 2017 and 2018 budget years. For some background, the award for this combined vehicle purchase was previously brought to council at the May 22 council meeting. However, during the meeting, city council members and staff concurred that additional time was needed to review and confirm the proposed vehicles listed in the fiscal year 1617 and 1718 budgets. The council then created a subcommittee to further discuss all aspects of city vehicle replacement, such as needs, wear and tear conditions, and overall replacement process. A subcommittee meeting was held on July 23 with two council members and city staff. The meeting included review of the current state of the entire city fleet, a presentation of the city's depreciation and amortization policy, a presentation of the City of San Mateo's vehicle policy and amortization schedule, and a presentation on the vehicle replacement policies for six Bay Area cities. At this subcommittee meeting, staff further answered the council members' detailed questions regarding individual vehicles that are being presented for replacement tonight. In addition, the city's replacement policy was discussed, to which the subcommittee and members expressed an interest to develop a more detailed policy that provides a clearer criteria for when to replace a vehicle. Staff will be working with the city manager to review the existing process for any needed improvements, or possibly create a new policy and/or fleet study that will be presented to the council at future study sessions to obtain additional input and direction. To date, the city maintains 145 vehicles and other equipment in an ongoing effort to meet service level expectations. In the past years, due to challenged budgets, the city employed a practice of replacing only marked police vehicles and other vehicles, which may have experienced major failure. Our current process for establishing replacement lists starts with staff meeting with the garage mechanics and city departments to carefully analyze and review the replacement recommendation schedule, as well as the maintenance and repair history. The vehicle replacement list is then presented to council in the annual budget. In an effort to explain how city vehicles are used, city vehicles are driven or operated in a different manner than normal vehicles. They experience heavy use, start and stop all day long under demanding conditions, and are subject to mostly city driving. The city is approximately 5.5 square miles, and the city vehicles do not frequently reach high mileage over their useful life. However, these idle hours of use contribute to a total negative wear and tear effect on the vehicle's lifespan, which is not represented by the overall mileage of a vehicle. Vehicles usually don't have a specific backup if they're taken out of service or suffer a major breakdown. They have specialized equipments, equipment, radios, toolboxes, lights, and pressurized equipment. When this happens, it has a deferred effect on the task for which the vehicle is intended. Due to the older age of some of the vehicles, we are experiencing more serious issues, difficulty meeting smog requirements, and have difficulty getting parts, and have higher fuel costs. Tonight, staff is proposing 14 vehicles for replacement. Please direct your attention to the second slide. As you can see, from the 1617 vehicles, there's an F-450 dump truck and a Chevy Lumina. And then below that, in the slide behind that, is the proposed vehicles for the 1718 vehicle replacements. Two vehicles are being proposed, as I said, from the 1617 budget, 12 are being proposed from the 1718 budget. This and other detailed information regarding the current state and need for replacement of each of these vehicles was both stated in the staff report and attached summary documents that were previously delivered to council. To procure these vehicles, staff is using a combination of government purchasing cooperative agreements and competitive bids. Both methods of procurement are in compliance with the state contract code and the city's purchasing regulations. For examples of government purchasing through cooperative agreements, two trucks will be selected through the National Joint Powers Alliance, and one motorcycle for the police department would be selected using a government contract and price of a recently purchased motorcycle by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Both vendors were selected based on the availability, price, and ability to provide all specifications having satisfactorily provided similar vehicles for municipalities across the country and in California. For the remaining 11 vehicles, city staff, in compliance with state contract code and the city's local purchasing regulations, issued a notice to bidders to automobile dealerships and posted the notice on the city's website. The cost to replace the 14 proposed vehicles is $755,500, which includes the cost of equipment outfitting, sales tax, license registration, and delivery. Staff is requesting a reappropriation of available 1617 budget in the amount of $83,000, and a reappropriation of available 1718 budget in the amount of $585,000, funding approved by the city council in prior budgets. Staff is requesting to appropriate available funds in the General Equipment Revolving Fund in the amount of $87,500 for the difference in the total vehicle purchase price, primarily due to the revised cost of various large maintenance trucks, outfitting of public safety vehicles, and the addition of a damaged central garage truck not previously included in the replacement schedule. With a General Equipment Revolving Fund balance of approximately $5 million, there are sufficient funds for this appropriation. In closing, I wanted to reassure the council tonight that staff works very hard, not only to provide a sustainable fleet, but take very seriously our role and the responsibility as good stewards of rate payer and citizen dollars. We work with the accounting staff, the city manager's office, the various departments, and analyze very closely each vehicle, its unique role in the operation and delivery of the services, and make adjustments to ensure that when we recommend the replacement of a vehicle, it's done so in a thoughtful and reasonable manner. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to take any questions that the council would have.
Okay. And I know there was a subcommittee. Vice Mayor, did you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank staff's time for, once again, spending time with council to explain the vehicle replacement program and how it works. And one of the things that I got the feedback on is that it seems like it's an ongoing thing that staff is being asked these same questions. What's going on? Why these vehicles? I look at the amount of mileage, and I kind of question these things. So one of the items we did discuss, which was also in your presentation, which I appreciate, is to work and develop being clear guidelines for the replacement of the vehicles, so that staff's clear and that council is clear, and that we can go back to these guidelines and that it meets these needs. And I think most importantly, we all need to understand that vehicles need to be available for city employees. Of course, from a public safety standpoint, right? So police and fire, it's kind of a hands down, we need to have those vehicles. But also that the vehicles our employees are driving around, whether it's a pickup truck for the water department or the sewer department, that those vehicles are representing the city and who we are. And that a vehicle that has been out there for many years, getting the beating and the abuse that it is, is also not a good representation of the city and who we are. Because these vehicles do take that beating. And I appreciate the comments by staff as well, when you can't just look at mileage on a document and say, well, God, only 40,000 mileage, when these vehicles, like you said, sit idle, right? So you might have a truck idle all day long, not getting a total of five miles, but it's been in use all day long. The other thing that we are very clearly communicated on is that having to replace parts on vehicles that don't exist, they're having to search on Amazon for parts, that's not good, right? So we need to feel confident in the vehicles that we have on fleet, that we're confident that our employees will have those vehicles to do their job and to do it efficiently. So I thank you for the report, and I appreciate your time.
Councilmember Medina.
Right. I served with Vice Mayor Davis on the subcommittee, and you guys did a good job explaining how it works and what was involved in it. So looking forward to how the guidelines are going to be revised and looking at changing that amortization schedule, since where cars are 15 years minimum that we're keeping them. And currently, we're costing them at seven. It's something that we need to clearly look back at. So these vehicles, how do they get auctioned off? Is the public advised of it? I think that Harley-Davidson police motorcycle would be really, really cool. But I think you guys are going to take off like the San Bruno, okay. And then, so that was primarily it. As for the street sweeper, they no longer make it. The one that we have is currently functioning okay?
It's functioning.
It's functioning.
We've spent a lot of money on it in the past years.
Okay. So are there any plans to get a rental while we're going to be waiting for the new model to come out? Or what's the plan to...
We're looking at every possibility that we can.
Okay. I think that's it. So the public will be, there'll be some kind of announcement that the vehicles are auctioned on a certain day? How does that work?
You know, there's been some changes in the organization and the person that actually ran the fleet is not here at this moment. And so I think what I understood is the city's emblems and all that, logos, everything gets removed, and then it gets sent to an auction site where they would auction off the vehicle. And so there is a vendor that the city uses for the auction of these vehicles.
And just one last additional question. Our fleet manager at that time mentioned the idea of having additional police vehicles, I guess, in the garage. So when something happens to one of those vehicles, that it's a quicker turnaround in getting a replacement. And the timing of, there recently was a police vehicle that was damaged. I just wanted to, I thought it was a good idea, and wanted to kind of hear more details about that, but I understand that that person's not here. But is the vehicle that was involved in the accident, is it operable or...
Yep.
Okay.
The 2017 Ford Explorer with 23,000 miles is currently at the shop. When it comes to the police vehicles, we try to expedite the repairs as soon as possible. They're going to back on the street for public safety and for use. And at least ballpark figures is, we do not believe, it has to obviously be inspected by the professionals at the auto body shop, but just as long as the frame checks out and everything else, we're expecting ballpark to be anywhere between 9,000 to 15,000 maybe at the tops. So, but it's not going to be totaled. And it's still...
And I know that's just preliminary. This just happened, and so...
Right.
Appreciate, but no one's holding you to that.
Right, right. I just wanted to, I have the information.
That's not really on the agenda, but yes, but appreciate the update.
Okay.
Marty? Michael, anything? Please.
I'd like some clarification on the descriptions that you're using for these vehicles. They're tagged as fiscal year 1718. And I'm wondering, where do those designations come from? Is that just that they were identified in a specific year for replacement? So they've been sort of sitting without action?
That's correct.
Since that, okay, so we've been accumulating these, even though they were designated to be replaced? Okay. Okay. So when this first came up as an agenda item, I had a number of questions I submitted to the city manager regarding concerns I had. And at the time, we weren't told that there would be a subcommittee. The item was pulled from the agenda. We got no notification that a subcommittee was created. Who would be on that subcommittee? First I heard of it was when I read the staff report. The staff report didn't include any of the findings, any of the material that was shared with the subcommittee. We were told that a new policy will be developed, but we don't have that policy, or any indication of what might change in that policy that could affect how we would make this decision. So based on that, and also the fact that none of the questions I submitted were ever responded to, I'm not going to support this. But I do want, I want to acknowledge staff's work on this. Dennis, I hear you, and I understand that you guys have your processes, and I know that you follow them. But based on the fact that I think that we had a breakdown in the administrative process, I won't support this action. And lastly, I would say, another reason is, you know, abandoning the Harley-Davidsons for BMW, that was like the nail in the coffin. I just can't support that. Thank you.
And I'd have to go back in notes, but I think on the subcommittee, I think that was appointed at a council meeting, the two. So that was done in light of the concern that we kept asking question, we would approve it in the capital improvement, and then we would have questions which would go back. So that was done, that part at a council meeting. As far as the questions, I think just for clarification, those were with the former city manager. Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, Irene, do you have any questions?
Okay. So this is an action item. There is a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, and if so, there would be a roll call. And the action?
Motion to adopt. Second. Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
No.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now move on to comments from council members. Do we have any? Irene, please.
I'd just like to remind people that Saturday, the 15th, is the California Coastal Cleanup Day. And we, the Beautification Task Force of San Bruno, will be having a setup at the Posey Park, which is in front of the fountain on San Mateo Avenue and San Bruno Avenue by the train station. We will, last time I said it was 10, I'm sorry, it's 9. 9 to 12, we will be there, and we will have all the equipment you need. So I hope you come. Thank you.
Marty? Down to you and I.
For the sake of not being too repetitive, basically, just still wanted to stress what I said last council meeting. I haven't had an opportunity yet to speak to our new city manager about the priority meeting and revenue meetings. And so I just wanted to, I'm looking forward to when, hopefully, a schedule of when those meetings would occur. And also, I'm interested in a list of the projects that were ongoing that we should be aware of, and have your analysis on what we should be working on. So it comes back to priorities, priorities and revenue, you know, how we're going to pay for the things that are important. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
And it's more projects broad-based, not just like projects of development, but correct, yeah. Okay. So for myself, as we know, there are, you know, obviously today is the 17th anniversary of the terrorist attacks that devastated a nation, killed many. But obviously, we are all here. Democracy works. Also, we, so we want to acknowledge, and we're going to adjourn in a few folks in their memory. But before we do that, and also, we had our San Bruno pipeline explosion that happened on the 9th, and that was 10 years ago. But on a positive note, before we get into that, it was Sunday at St. John's Church, and that's on North San Anselmo, which marked 100 years being in the city of San Bruno. So they appreciated the visit, the talk, and they wanted to, they said hello to all, thank you for the proclamation. It was amazing that, really, it was in June, but they celebrated September because they found from the parish council meeting minutes from 1924 that they held it in September. So hence, therefore, it was in September. But also today, I came to where they had the bocce ball tournament. Great, beautiful day, good turnout. And it was also a dedication and acknowledgement for Coach Ken. Ken, who used to be here at the billing attendant, Ken, who coached Pee-wee baseball for decades, who's been a volunteer, very active in all the athletics, and on the board since '07. So it was great to see some of the folks that he coached show up today, as well as the tournament. And it was an exciting time, and may I tell you, they take bocce ball very serious here. But with that said, on Sunday, there was a remembrance for the eight that were killed up in the explosion, San Bruno Pipeline. I went up to the, first I went to the fire station at 52, who responded first to say hello. Then I went to there where it was a very solemn, but as they wish, acknowledgment. hello, and I went to there where it was a very solemn, but as they wish, acknowledgement. Folks gathered, they took a moment around the same time, 6:15 or so, to be silent and to have the names read, and to remember where they were, the pain that they suffered, the pain that they still suffer, but also acknowledging the change in the neighborhood as far as new children playing, excited for the playground to open. To see, again, this community and those folks that have gone through so much, to come together, and the most exciting part of it was, again, yes, a little cold and windy, but it was just the camaraderie and the conversation about that day, but about the future. So, I want to always...we must never forget, we must always remember, but we will move forward, and as we will dedicate the park at some point soon, it will just be that, and they are very excited and looking for a festive, enjoyable time when that moment is there and the youth will be playing in those parks. And also, again, as I alluded earlier, it is September the 11th, and our nation went through a lot, our community went through a lot, on a 9th and on the 11th. And so, with all that we can, I think, in reflection and in honor of those, I would ask that we adjourn in a moment of silence in their honor. We will be adjourning to a study session, which will be next door, if I'm not mistaken, so that this room can be cleaned up, and we can keep the ball rolling here, keep efficiency going, and this will be a study session, again, next door. From that, we will be then adjourning to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held September 25, 2018, here at the San Bruno Senior Center at 7:00 PM. Enjoy your evening.